Trustee Wager.
Here.
Trustee Decay.
I'm in a meeting. I went on a walk with for you. Okay, good.
We'll put trustee Decay down as present.
Trustee Renoudin.
Here.
Mayor Parkton lastly. Madam Mayor Chucky.
Here. Okay, we are going to do the pledge of allegiance, so we found a flag. So I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ryder.
Are we gonna just skip the protocols tonight, I guess?
I think so.
Under these incredible circumstances, that would be okay. So we'll start with new business first for all who are.
Can I ask a question? I'm just a little confused because isn't new business usually just before staff reports?
That's correct, trustee Graham. Tonight, we're doing new business because we need to consider a resolution to hold virtual meetings as our first order of business to make this all official.
But what about the B through, the B, B, and C under new business?
That should be B, C, and D. We'll go ahead and do those as written, but the first thing was to move up this resolution that you'll consider to approve holding virtual meetings. That was the first order of business.
And I do understand that. I just didn't understand why all those other things weren't.
Yeah, we're going a little bit out of order due to the unique circumstances tonight.
Okay, just curious. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Okay, so the first order of new business, you've got a resolution. I sent you an update from Paul Koznick today. And I don't know, Lisa, if you can put that revised one up on screen. Paul made a couple changes to paragraph five. But what this resolution is basically doing is saying, you know, we've got a unique situation. We've declared a local disaster. And due to the circumstances surrounding the COVID-19 and our social distancing, et cetera, this resolution is basically resolving that we can hold virtual meetings like this indefinitely. And for right now, we're going to make this, if approved as is, this would take us out to June 30th, 2020. Of course, it will be a new board and a new mayor. But if circumstances change and we either need to terminate this or extend it, we'll be able to do so at future meetings.
Okay.
This is very similar to what communities all across Colorado are doing to just basically make official the fact that we need to hold meetings in this way for the time being.
Can everybody see the screen share that I put up with the document?
Yes.
Yes, great.
The amended version compared to the one that we have in the packet, Lisa?
I believe so, yes.
On screen is the amended version. And Paul, I don't know if you want to, if you can speak to what you changed. It basically had to do with the quasi judicial issue.
Yeah, sorry, I can't figure out how to actually see me here on the computer. But anyway, you'll probably see my kids running around if you saw me. The change that I made was to address the quasi judicial hearings. In the original draft there, it said that the quasi judicial hearings could not be done virtually. And so quasi judicial hearings, if you recall, are going to be things where, you know, there's a citizen submitting an application on something and the board is then considering that application, whether it's to deny or approve it. Today, you have one quasi judicial matter on the agenda, and that would be the marijuana application. So again, that's an application, and you guys are considering the facts of the application as compared to the law for approving that application. So for those types of things, you know, in normal times, a elected official that is appearing virtually generally does not get to actually vote on that type of application. And that's because of, there's certain due process rights for an applicant when they're appearing before a board in a quasi judicial hearing. Again, this is, you know, we have a unique time here, and in order to allow these applications to continue to come for you, before you, and you guys being able to make determinations on it and try to keep some of the business moving as normal, there kind of has to be an exception to, you know, the general rule on quasi judicial hearings. So again, I mean, as John knows, there's been a lot of back and forth on all these listservs this week, and, you know, there's been certain communities saying, well, we shouldn't do this virtually, meaning we shouldn't have quasi judicial hearings virtually, and some others saying we should. There's a little bit of limited risk that, you know, an applicant will say that, hey, you know, I didn't get a fair shake because I wasn't there in person. But, you know, again, it's something for the board to consider as, you know, if you want to try to keep business moving and you understand that there's some limited risk involved with allowing to hear these types of things without actually seeing them in person, you know, then the board can certainly, you know, consider still ruling on these types of applications. So sorry, that was a little long-winded, but I, you know, was trying to condense about 100 emails from the attorneys on the listserv into that.
So that's number seven under seven connected meetings.
We were, are you, was that a question?
Because it says no quasi judicial matters will be heard.
There was an updated one, Barbara, excuse me, trustee Renoudin.
No, I, yeah, I understand that. But the change was to that particular area?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something here.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, exactly, you said this could be an indefinite. Is that correct, Mr. Ryder?
Trustee Wegerd, it's, right now, it's in place till June 30th.
Okay, I thought I read that on there. Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, well, probably the future board, as elected, will have the option of extending or terminating this agreement at their discretion should the whole situation change.
Okay, I'm good with this as it reads.
I am as well. Thank you.
Me too.
So we would probably want to entertain a motion.
Need a motion? So Jess, is that a motion from you, trustee Wegerd?
Hey, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the resolution number 2020-03, a resolution approving town council meeting special procedures during declared disasters.
I'll second it.
And then Mayor Chucky, you'd want to call the roll.
Okay. Trustee Barella?
Yes.
Trustee Graham?
Yes.
Trustee Wager?
Yes.
Trustee Kay?
Yes.
Trustee Renoudin?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Chucky?
Yes.
Thank you all. The second order of business is to consider ratifying my March 18th Town Administrator Declaration of Local Disaster due to the COVID-19 virus. I had the authority to do so and did so in conjunction with the county, who also made a similar declaration last week. However, it is only good for seven days, and that deadline is coming up here in the next couple of days. So we would ask the trustees to consider not only extending that, but setting a date by which it's extended. And so probably June 30th would be the date to consider so that it would match up with our special meeting procedures. The declaration of disaster basically starts the meter ticking and sets us up to potentially receive emergency funding from the federal government and state government, and is also something that virtually all towns and communities across Colorado are doing. So at the end of the day, if you want to discuss, we can, but I would look for just a motion to ratify this agreement and extend it to June 30th.
Awesome.
Second.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barella seconded.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Okay, roll call, please. Kelly.
Trustee Barella?
Yes.
Trustee Graham?
Yes.
Trustee Wager?
Yes.
Trustee Decay?
Yes.
Trustee Renoudin?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Chucky?
Yes.
Thank you again, mayor and trustees. New business item should be C, not B. I apologize for that. A consideration to approve the issuance of a retail marijuana dispensary license to Kind Silverton LLC, DBA The Kind Castle. So in your packages is Lisa Adair's, Planning Director Adair's write-up. She is recommending approval. If she's online and can speak, that would be great. I think she is online, and Lisa, I don't know if you can get her live to speak to this matter.
Hang on just a second, John.
Okay. Just a little background, it's a retail dispensary similar to Green Works or Mountain Nannies. It's going to be located at 1028 Green Street. They've met all applicable codes and zoning and so forth. They meet the, maybe most importantly, they meet the setbacks 500 feet from the school and 450 feet from existing retail dispensaries. So there is no variance being requested here. And as I said, Planning Director Adair recommends approval.
Lisa, sit with us. She did mention that she was going to contact the nearby neighbors to get their voice on the issue. I just wondered what they all said.
That was going to be my question as well.
Director Adair, you can go ahead and speak.
This is a public hearing with a legal notice that isn't supposed to start until 7:00 PM.
So we don't need to talk about it now.
So we need to table this until 7:00?
Yeah, okay.
We can do that, so tabled.
Thank you, Lisa.
The last item under new business is the consideration to schedule a special meeting to hear the Silverton Lakes project proposal. I would propose that we consider April 6th. That is the day before the election, but that would be a Monday, first Monday in April. If we, if so agreed upon, if the board would consider setting that schedule for 7:00 on April 6th solely to hear the Silverton Lakes proposal.
Fine with me.
I've got nothing on my calendar anymore.
I'm good with that.
Is there a reason why you want to do it before the election as opposed to after?
Just because this board and mayor has heard the proposal over the last, you know, on and off several months and are familiar with the issue.
That makes sense.
So I think we just need a motion and a second, and we'll set that meeting.
I'll move that we set a special meeting on April 6th at 7:00 to discuss a special meeting.
If it pleases the board, we could do it earlier or another time. If that, but 7:00 works for staff, and if that's okay, we can set it. But if you wanted to do it earlier, consider that as well.
7:00 works for me.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that we, oh wait, Barbara, you already started, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. I think I finished it. We have a special meeting on April 6th, 2020 at 7:00 to discuss purposes of considering the Silverton Lakes proposal for approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Molly, did you want to second that?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a couple questions or a question regarding, will we have Silverton Lakes engineers, the engineering firm, and are they all, they will all be present?
Yes, good question, trustee Decay. They will be present. Cottonwood Engineering is who's the, who are the experts, will be there.
Okay.
Anything else, trustee Decay?
No.
Okay.
Will this be virtual also, the special meeting, do you think?
It will.
Okay.
This is a very serious decision, really, for this board. Would we want to schedule it after the election where there would be maybe the opportunity for us to meet face to face?
Well, this board will no longer be seated on August 13th, or I'm sorry, April 13th. And I, this is just John Ryder talking. I, there's virtually probably no way this COVID is going to clear in time to have face-to-face meetings by that time.
No.
Well, and I think you're correct that we're all well versed in what's happening. So we should onto a new board to have every.
To our first public comment section, we do have a number of attendees virtually joining us, and if any would like to speak, I think Lisa Branner maybe review the procedure again of how they can click on their, raising hand on their screens, and we'll see if we can't get any public comment if there is any.
So participants from home should see a hand icon on the bottom of their screen that lets them raise their hand, and when they do that, they should pop up. And I should be able to see them and activate them. So give me a second to make sure that I have everything where it needs to be.
And I thank the public for bearing with us. This is obviously a difficult and new time for us, and we're going to try to make the best of our technology here and continue to perfect it.
Okay, we are ready if anyone wants to comment. I don't see any hands raised yet. I'll give it another second, just in case.
Lisa, there's a question that's popping up on the side of my thing here.
In the chat?
That they're not, they're not seeing a hand that can be waved. There's a square thing that has chat underneath it, and that may be what they should be looking for, and not a hand waving.
It says, there's eight people or something on there?
Yeah.
I see 14 attendees.
Yep.
And. Here's Amy Frank. The raised hand is next to the chat. So I'm hearing from some participants that they do see a raised hand icon and others do not. I think let's try a combination. If you do have a hand icon and would like to comment, go ahead and do that. If you have chat but not a hand, go ahead, and you can post a question now. Do we need to click on chat, do you think? If you click on chat, it will open the window to the side. Okay. Yeah, and I can see a participant saying the raised hand is next to the chat. So I think some people are seeing it, some people are not. Okay, Jim Donovan.
So good, trustee Renoudin. Sounds like you're seeing the same thing we are as far as the online chat boxes.
I don't see, I don't see a raised hand anywhere.
Yeah, I don't either, Barbara.
Our panelists will not see a raised hand. Only our audience members viewing from home will see a raised hand. There you go, okay. Okay, and if folks want, I am seeing comment coming through on chat. If people would like to type in their comment, we can read that out to them. And then I did get a text from Lisa Adair letting us know that the applicant for that marijuana permit is on the phone. And I see a raised hand. I'm going to pop in there and see if we can allow Mark Maasich to. Bless you. Some public comment.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
Good evening.
Hi, what a crazy time, right?
Yes.
So thank you, guys, for letting us have the public hearing this way. I mean, that's great for us and hopefully more convenient for you guys as well. But I was just raising my hand to see if it was a viable option for communicating with you guys, and if you guys would see it based on, you know, the communication that was going on and who was being heard and who wasn't. So I really don't have anything to say. I mean, I'm here waiting for John Diet, who's my other business partner, that it should be online soon.
And who are you?
I'm the manager of the shop.
And what's your name?
My name is Mark Maasich.
Mark Message.
Ma, Ma.
Maasich.
Okay, M.A.
Y. S.I.C.H. Just like it's spelled, Maasich, Maasich.
Okay.
But, you know, I guess I'm just here to answer whatever questions you guys might have. Like I said, John's coming on the phone shortly and gave me the information to call in, so my text messages and comments were more based on making sure that we had things in place if I had to comment, so that I know you guys were hearing what I was saying.
Aren't we supposed to, rather than ask him questions now, shouldn't we hear to see, shouldn't we see if somebody else would like to make or have a question?
I think what we want to do, trustee Renoudin, is wait till 7:00, and then we'll open, we'll have Director Adair give a brief overview of the project. We'll then open it up for a public hearing and comment, and then allow you the opportunity to vote on approval. So we've got just as, I'm looking, we've got a couple minutes till 7:00, and then maybe we can bring Director Adair online to give us a brief overview of the project.
Okay.
Lisa Branner, can you tee Lisa Adair up?
I just unmuted her, and I think she is ready to roll.
Okay, we just got about 30 seconds, and we'll let her go. Longest 30 seconds ever.
Yeah.
All right, I've got 7:00. Let's open this up to Planning Director Adair. This is item 1C. Consideration to approve the issuance of a retail marijuana dispensary license to Kind Silverton LLC. We'll turn it over to Lisa.
Hello, you're all looking lovely. I'm glad to see that you're all doing well. So we have a public hearing at 7:00. The applicants are John Diet and Mark Maasich. The project site is at 1028 Green Street, which is across from the Prospector Motel and across from Rob Roof and Jim Willer's house, which is also known as the Pirate House, 1028 Green. We have a proposed retail marijuana store. I don't see any planning or zoning regulations that would cause me to recommend denial. I have not received any opposition or concerns from the neighbors. I did get two neighbors that responded that they don't have a problem with the project. The applicants are buying the existing house and property. This will be the third marijuana facility in the downtown BP district. If you approve this tonight, I would recommend approval of it after asking the public if anyone is calling in to state an opinion. It's a public hearing, and I believe that the applicants are on the phone to answer any questions that you have. The other thing is that the applicants are designing lights and a sign and an entrance, and we're hoping to get your feedback on that tonight. They just sent me a drawing, which I forwarded to the meeting hosts. Maybe we can get it up on your screen, I'm not sure. So if you have any questions for me or the applicant, John Diet, we would want to also ask if there's anyone on the line that has a public comment about this project.
Oh, I'm a little bit confused. Can we ask questions of you?
Yes.
Okay, under the sheriff's state review on page two, it said you didn't see a copy of any fingerprints or the required state licenses, although the fingerprints may be on file with the sheriff and the state. Isn't that important that we have?
Yes, and that's part of our ordinance that those are required, and I would have to ask the applicants if they're on file with the sheriff or with the state. And your approval, according to the ordinance, if you approve this, those have to be in place for your approval to be formally completed or approved.
Yeah, so that would, that would be provision six underneath conditions, then, Lisa.
Yep. So if we do approve it, it would be contingent on getting those documents, correct?
Yes, the applicant would have to meet all of the.
Right.
Specifics of the ordinance that was adopted in, I think, 2008 or 2015-08.
Okay.
I'm not really sure I'm liking the drawing too much. I think this is something that needs to come before. I think this is something that needs to come before the planning commission and I think it should be in that it's in the historical district.
It's not in the historic district, but the applicants, without me asking, were already researching how to make it fit with our historic ordinances.
Okay, because there are some really tasteful ways that we can do a turret or something with the appearance of a castle without actually some sort of faux middle age look-alike.
I have a question as well. Are the trees actually real in this drawing? Are they attached to the facade of the home? Because it says small purple light and it looks like it's glowing on the tree. Just a little more information on that as well?
I think we should have the meeting host turn the applicants, unmute the applicant so he could answer these questions for you.
Director Adair, are they going to be raising a hand or are they on the phone? Because if they're on the phone, I need to know the phone number to identify them.
The applicant's phone number is 773-5463. Do you see that number Lisa?
I do not.
I do see Mr. Maasich is out there.
Yep, and I enabled him to be able to speak, so perhaps he can chime in.
Hi, how are you guys? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. In response to your guys' questions, the drawing that we have proposed so far is just, you know, our thoughts and what's gonna fit within the local ordinance. We are 100% willing to make it, you know, fit with the downtown district or any other district that you guys have down there. That's no problem whatsoever and we'll do whatever we have to do to comply with that. We were thinking, as far as the purple lights that you guys seen in the drawing, although not a professional drawing, we can get it into that pretty quickly. It's just for lighting for the plants or the rocks, you know, the trees to enter the building, which, you know, may help distinguish us with, you know, our brand and who we are while falling in line with what you guys are asking for in your code. We're completely open for suggestions, 100%, so, you know, it's, you know, please take that lightly and know that we will take any changes into consideration that you guys may have for us.
What kind of signage would you have on the building itself? I don't, I'm not particularly keen on the idea of purple lights shining up on the house for the business.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if John Diet's online. He's the one that's doing the sign plan that we have that we're submitting with you guys. Can we maybe try to see if he's available to chime in on that?
I just allowed him into the meeting.
All right, let's let him answer that question if we can.
Okay.
John, are you available?
Now I'll repeat my question while we're waiting for him to come on. That was whether or not the trees were actually a facade or actually real trees in the drawing.
I personally have not seen the drawing, Ms. Brilla, but John Diet would be able to, you know, comment on that more specifically than I can. I don't want to speculate any, anyway, one way or the other. Honestly, I haven't seen the actual property. I've been to Silverton, I've seen the two existing retail marijuana shops that are there right now and I know they're placed in the downtown district, but I'm not 100% keen on the existence of this one or where it's located. I apologize.
I have a question for Lisa. Can you hear me Lisa?
Yes.
Have they, or they will, it's in your contingents, you know, if we approve this, but they do need to get approval with all the state regulations, correct?
Yes.
And will they be, will they be required to go to the planning commission?
No, that's not part of our ordinance. The ordinance is that this goes to the town board. It doesn't go to the planning commission. The town board is the local licensing authority.
Right, but on design, I guess I should have cleared that up.
Well, it's not actually in the historic overlay district. So it doesn't need to go to the planning commission or the town historic review committee. However, the applicants have been nice enough to agree to, before even had a chance to ask, they wanted to make sure that the town is okay with this project with, including the aesthetics. So they're already looking into ways to fit with our downtown historic architectural regulations.
Thank you.
I have a comment. If this is not gonna go to the planning commission, then the due diligence is gonna come upon the town trustees to approve any future construction to this project. That's correct?
Yeah, there is a limit of time. I would have to look in the ordinance. The town board meeting could not be scheduled any sooner than 30 days after the application was received.
Can I chime in real quick? I'm sorry, this is Mark Maasich. I did receive a text from John Diet. He's online, but he does not have the ability to communicate within the conversation we're having. So he can hear us, but he can't talk.
Okay.
And so I'm trying to get him to text me what, you know, his thoughts are and his opinions and what's taking place so that I can communicate with that, that with you guys so we can make, you know, a sound decision. Based on what's been said, you know, we all have state approval. I mean, John and I run a shop in Parachute that's very successful, very compliant with a lot of passings from, you know, the city and the MED and we both have approvals through them. Outside of that, you know, local ordinance is always required and your guys' requirements also have to, you know, go in that with the state because the local ordinance, whatever's more stringent is what applies. And so, you know, we are, we are both licensed as owners of the current facility and these ones, these licenses that we have. However, we haven't done that background check or the state check because it's several thousand dollars to do that check. And we wanted to, in our due diligence, make sure that we had contingency upon the local ordinance approval before we decided to, you know, pay for the extended variable of the state approval. But just to, you know, put some minds at rest, we both are approved and certified through the state currently, you know, and I think we provided those license numbers as well, if not, we can, so.
If I could, my main concern is with what will be the aesthetic appearance of the front of the building. Being that that is actually in the business district, you are surrounded by residences and I think we want to be careful with what kind of look we're presenting there towards the entrance of town, especially across from historical buildings such as Miners Union Hall.
Absolutely. You know, one of, one of my childhood memories is riding the train from Silverton to Durango and with my grandparents before they passed away. And that's, that's one of my childhood memories. You know, I lived in Montrose, I, you know, Treasure Uray and that whole, that whole area right there with the million dollar highway. I love Silverton, I've been there, I've seen it. I knew it when Acme was there in place of Rocky Mountain Annie's. I, we are 100% open to whatever we have to do. I mean, our goal is not to come in and disrupt any ordinances or any, you know, eyesores within the town. I mean, we want, we want to come in, we want to help the town, we want to establish our business and we want to be successful as well as, you know, making it successful and beneficial for the town as well. I mean, we do everything we can to, you know, participate in public events that we have in Parachute where we are currently. You know, we're doing everything that we can for this coronavirus and what we, you know, what's in place with the MED and the new regulations, the emergency regulations. We have, we have no opposition to anything that you guys might propose, nothing. If our sign doesn't meet your guys' requirements, let us know how we can, we will, we'll meet it. We just, we want to be part of the town. We want to try to get our business established there and, you know, we've set ourselves apart with where we are currently and our processes and our standard operating procedures where, you know, we're very confident in our knowledge and what we can do for the town and we think we can benefit you guys as well as ourselves if we're accepted in this, in this area. And we'll do whatever we have to do, sign is whatever we have to make sure that we, you know, appease the town and we're in compliance with the, you know, with what you guys want to show.
I have a question, I have a couple of questions actually. And one was to Jess. Jess, were you referring to the castle appearance that it doesn't fit the aesthetics of the area or architectural, you know, whatever? I don't like the castle look and I certainly don't like the purple lights. The other question I have is kids-
That's exactly correct Barbara.
Okay, the other question I have Lisa is, you know, the kids have a playground next to the library. Is that still far enough away?
Yes, it meets the ordinance. The first thing I checked.
And that was walking distance.
The board can make a sound judgment as we're examining this in the future and if we need to be in control of this without taking it to the planning commission, I'm okay with how this reads.
Actually, I was gonna say I agree with you Jess about your concerns about that building being at the entrance. That is part of the entrance of town and I, I do appreciate your, the applicant's conscientiousness about wanting to be so agreeable and cooperative and we do really appreciate another business coming to town. But is there some way that we could look at another drawing and get the other things finalized in this application?
Can we, could we request, say, a new architectural drawing and actually the signage, if we could see what the signage is also going to look at before approval?
Can I chime in real quick? I'm sorry, this is Mark Maasich. Ms. Dekay, I really appreciate your comment and I understand the concern. From what we've had, we've had, you know, similar concerns with other towns. Basically, what it has come down to is the approval of the license based on zoning requirements and everything required per the city ordinance, town ordinance, with a contingency of the city license being based upon things that, things that you're communicating to us now. You know, certain, certain things that they want, signage, visibility, things like that have come in for a contingency. What other towns have done, not saying that's what you guys have to do or what that's required of you, but what other towns have done is approve a contingent upon those requirements of those approvals, but based upon the current ordinance and what's required as far as the distancing and everything else that comes with it. So it's been an approval contingent upon. It's really hard to reset the public hearing to that, but that's how it's been in the past.
What towns are you referring to?
Nettleland, Craig, you know, those are the two main ones that we've done recently. You know, like I said, everybody has their local ordinance and that's, you know, that's what matters. But that's just some feedback on what other places have done during this time with the same information provided and with the public hearing. I mean, we've had, you know, make adjustments on signs or lighting, you know, everybody has their individual ordinances and zoning requirements and we're fully willing to change whatever we have to the compliance.
Madam Mayor, if you could, excuse me, may I add a little bit to follow up on what Mr. Maasich is commenting on?
Someone's-
That was me speaking Paul.
I believe Paul Koznick wanted to speak.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I was just gonna follow up on what that gentleman was saying and really the, is that somebody's phone?
I think it's my old speakers screaming.
So what the, what the board is considering today is the application and you're judging it against your, the town's regulations. And so for instance, there's standards for signs for these types of businesses. And so the question is whether it complies with the town's standards. And so although, you know, if the board doesn't think that, you know, they like it, it's really, the question is more of, does it comply with the standards? And so I think that's what Lisa was talking to before when she was saying, it's not part of the historical district, so we're not, we can't really take a close look at the architecture or other standards because they don't apply here. And the same with signs. The sign standards are, you know, the regular standards for the code. I think there's an additional statement where, you know, you could have a green cross and there's other specifics in there, but, you know, the board can't really go outside of what the code says and demand more from this applicant than what the code already requires.
May I ask a question just out of curiosity? Is this, is this part of a franchise that you're developing?
Hey, I need to chime in, can you, can I talk? Can, I can't, I can't.
I got-
I think we should accept this.
I have the, I have the applicant on my landline phone because he was not able to access the meeting with audio. So he's called me on the landline phone. And I wanted to mention, I was recommending approval with six conditions of approval. And condition 2, 3, and 4 have to do with the lighting, the signs, and the entrance. Now what the town board could consider doing as an option is approving the license as the local licensing authority and let the planning commission take a look at the lights, entrance, and signs to make sure that they comply with the town code. And then you can push the details on in the planning commission if you like for them to work out the details of the lights, sign, and entrance. And I'll put the applicant on the- And I'll put the applicant on the phone because he's been dying to talk to you.
Let me ask a question first before we go. Uh, did you guys see the note in here, the question from Becky Joyce? She texted, um, she's the public health director. And she was wondering how far, or is it far enough from the school and the school playground? Her concern is that it's too close in proximity to the school and where the kids gather.
It, it was in your packet that I, that I put together on March 9th. There's a map in there where I drew it all out. It was the first thing I checked. And it needs to be 500 feet minimum from the closest corner of the closest school property, which is the corner of 11th and Reese at the playground adjacent to the library. So they need to be 500 feet and they're 619 feet away. So it's not, i- it meets the regulations.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering, um, if we are going to answer the people that are texting questions and that's why I brought that up. Do you have a panel that shows where they're, where people are, are posting questions?
I see her question, yep.
Yeah.
Is, is there any way we can maybe po- post the, uh, you know, the doc that shows distances for the public to see?
The what?
Uh, just, just the document that shows the distancing from, uh,
Director Derr in her report, it's on page two, you know, clearly has concluded that this meets the ordinance and is beyond 500 feet. Uh, in page two, paragraph three. So she said it was one of the first things she looked at and double-checked on and-
Right.
In compliance.
Well, and I just wanted to address Becky's question, which was basically the same thing I asked a while ago, but trying to be kind to the people that are texting in questions.
Understood, I just wanted to make sure you knew that it was actually in her written report.
She also, did you see that where she said the castle face looks like a bouncy house for kids? I hope you make it less kid appealing since it's so close to the school.
Can I go back to my curiosity about a franchise? Is, is this part of-
Uh, can, can I, can someone hear me? Can everyone hear me? This is John Dyatt.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Not very well.
John, go ahead.
Hello, can everyone hear me okay or?
Go ahead, John, we can all hear you, go ahead and go ahead.
Just speak slowly, please speak slowly because we can barely hear you.
Okay. I guess, so it's not, this is not a franchise, so this is, uh, you're speaking with the owner, this, we're not franchising this out in any capacity. Uh, we have been expanding. Uh, everyone can hear me okay so far?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Very good, so it's, it's been tough to sit and, uh, and have all the answers to all your questions this whole time and not be able to get, get it, but I'm not sure what was going on, so. Uh, so, uh, so as far as the, the business itself, yeah, I mean, I'm, it's owner operated, it's just Mark and myself, uh, that, so there's no, you know, we're not getting anyone else involved, there's no outside investors. Uh, we really are, you know, we're small town people ourselves, so we, uh, and we do have a love for, for Silverton. Certainly are excited to, uh, be able to do business there and, uh, anything with the castle itself, it's one of the cosmetics of the castle. We wanted to put out there really what, uh, what we would like to, what we'd like to see happen. Uh, some of this, uh, was really supposed to be discussion, uh, such as the trees. And to answer an earlier question, they're real trees that we wanted to put in. Uh, we wanted to, you know, put in some nice landscaping for the property, we'll make it look very nice. But, uh, just the, the main plants that I depicted here are just to reflect where the lighting, uh, would follow. So we didn't really put a landscaping plan together, uh, for the hearing, but, uh, uh, the, the purple lighting is something that we've been doing and it's something that we sort of have as part of our brand. But at the same time, Lisa and I have discussed the fact that we can see scratching the, the purple lighting, you know, the code. But we want to do, we want to fit in with the, uh, the demeanor of the town. We don't want to just be compliant, we want, we don't want to be an eyesore even if it's approved. It's important to us that we're fitting in with the theme, we're open to any feedback about how the actual design of the castle is. Um, uh, but, uh, lighting, we want to keep that to a minimum because we want to acknowledge the dark skies, uh, regulation. And then one more thing, if I may say, uh, also that was asked earlier as far as the fingerprints. So I have contacted, uh, the sheriff, uh, many times, I've left many messages. Um, I've been desperately trying to get, uh, the Identigo code, uh, the, the, uh, uh, the CBI account number, uh, which is all we needed to schedule, uh, because I, I believe Silverton has recently switched over to the Identigo digital fingerprint from ink. And that's happened, I think, in the last couple of months. Because I know last year, late last year, we were discussing fingerprints and they had not yet switched to Identigo. So I had contacted the sheriff many times, I've left messages. And understandably so, the sheriff is busy with things, the last, uh, message I got was that the sheriff was, uh, uh, conducting a search and rescue. And I was told, look, you got to weigh the priorities, that's much more important than the fingerprint. And so I've been just, you know, respectful, of course, the sheriff's busy. So we have not been, we did not do the, uh, the fingerprints yet because of that. But we've already done prints in countless others of municipalities and within state already. So, so we'll certainly have an approval there, uh, but we have yet to do the prints that, you know, can make that contingent, uh, on the licensure approval.
Thank you.
I do believe that the applicant has met all the requirements and, um, and I believe that, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve this, um, application contingent on the approval of the six, um, the items, um, that, that it would be contingent on the six items that our planning department, uh, that those six items are addressed before they can have full approval.
I'll second it.
Hey, I'd like to make sure that we understand that not all six, I believe, needed, um, to be reviewed. Correct? I think it was only, uh, let's see.
Two, three.
Yeah, let's just be clear. Hang on, I gotta put my glasses on. Okay, it would be two, three, and four.
Exactly.
Um, that need to be met with the, uh, planning commission. Is that correct, Tiffany?
Well, but also there's still, um, there's still state requirements that they meet. And that's, I think, number six, state regulations, local and state regulations, um,
But I wanted to be clear that you were only pushing a few of those to the planning commission, which were two, three, and four, I believe, just to make sure that we are a hundred percent clear on what we're saying. Because it's in Lisa's report. So you don't want to include all six that go to the planning department, only the ones that would adequately apply. Correct?
But they also need to meet the others too, correct Lisa?
Go to the planning commission, those go to us.
Right.
We're saying only a few of these would go to the planning commission. So let's make that very clear in your motion.
Perhaps we can do a, we can do what's required of the planning commission and what's required by the local ordinance, uh, so that it's on record for what we need to do and how we need to do it.
Number two, three, and four. Number two, three, and four, we could change to read that the should be, uh, shall be as determined by the planning commission and the Town of Silverton Municipal Code.
Beautiful.
Okay, I still move.
For number one, I would like to know who the town attorney would recommend listed as the licensee. And then I would like to know if there's any comments from the public.
So is that a direct question on who the licensee is supposed to be?
The licensee could be an individual or an entity. It could be John Dyatt. It could be Kind Silverton LLC. It could be Kind Castle, Castle Colorado LLC. What we've had in the past is LLCs that were the town licensee. And then the LLC is sold to a new individual. So it's a transfer of license without, uh, town review.
And yeah, that's what, that's, that is what's happened with Rocky Mountain, uh, Rocky Mountain Annies and, and Acme. But that's, that's no intentional, what we have on, uh, doing. We, we plan to maintain our LLC and operate as, uh, Kind Silverton in the town.
I would recommend that you approve the, approve the application. Condition number one, the licensee shall be as determined by the town attorney. Conditions two, three, and four, which is lighting, entrance, and signage, shall be as determined by the planning commission and the town municipal code. Number five, the town board approval is contingent on all individual town, county, department approvals and inspection. And number six, the project shall comply with all local and state regulations.
So is that a new motion, or wording for a motion? Where are we on that?
I think we should let Austin weigh in if he has any comments before we continue with this motion.
Hey guys, sorry, I've been, uh, I've been participating, but I haven't been able to speak. So I, I, I wasn't one of the squares up here, but, um, I, I think you guys have done pretty good here. I, I don't really have anything to add at this point.
Then I'm good with making a motion based on the considerations that Lisa, Lisa Derr has explained.
So before you do this, trustee, we're, we're getting rid of the motion that trustee DeKaye put in. We already have a motion on the table in a second. So where, where do the trustees want to go?
Well, I think-
Jess said, we need to move it, Lisa has brought to us.
Yes, I agree.
Can that be combined with Tiffany's motion?
Or Tiffany, do you want to leave your motion since we've had more of a discussion? And do a-
Would you like it to, to, to go ahead and state that the, um, that I make a motion to approve the proposed marijuana, um, store located at 1028 Green Street, following the conditions of approval. Uh, number one, the, the attorney takes a look at the licensee. Number two, three, and four will go to the planning commission. And now five and six will, will stay, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then that will be my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do I dare ask if there's any more comment? Okay, Kelly, roll call please. Kelly?
All right, now let's try it again, trustee Barilla.
Yes.
Trustee Graham?
Yes.
Trustee Wager?
Yes.
Trustee DeKaye?
Yes.
Trustee Renahan?
No.
Mayor Fortin Lashley?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Chucky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, if I may, without further ado, both Jim Donovan and Becky Joyce have put in an incredibly long day and days and would, uh, like to immediately move, uh, to their part of the agenda here so they can update us and get some much-needed rest.
Amen.
Sorry about that, Jim, we went a little longer than we would have thought.
No worries.
Appreciate you and Becky hanging in there.
Yeah, certainly, uh, um, let's see, Becky will be back in just a moment. But, uh, really what we wanted to do is just really answer any questions for you. I think everyone is probably up to speed on, um, the events that have occurred. Uh, you have, uh, a disaster declaration, uh, that I believe everybody approved earlier, uh, for the town. The county, uh, board of commissioners will be meeting on Wednesday and also approving the disaster declaration. They will also be approving a public health disaster declaration. And today we released a public health order and, uh, that has been distributed. Um, and that is, uh, limiting activities of people as necessary to protect public health and shelter in place. Uh, so we've taken some really, uh, quite drastic measures, but that is what is needed to basically, uh, get us through this situation. Um, really, at this point, I will just, uh, answer any questions unless, uh, people would like further updates.
Jim, I have a question, um, regarding, I was a little confused. I did listen in at the, uh, at your five o'clock meeting, uh, regarding the new public health order. But I'm a little confused about, um, how the information is, is disseminated, how it's sent out to the community. If you could please reiterate that, I would appreciate it.
Certainly, uh, so we, uh, we have a public information officer and that's, uh, Deanne Gallegos. And, um, her job is really to get this information out. So we have a three-prong strategy. We, uh, get it onto the county and the town websites as soon as we have basically approved, uh, information. And I approve every, every single posting, every single press release. And then we, uh, will also then distribute it to social media, to, uh, local, regional, national press. And then, uh, for people who do not have, uh, electronic access, we have now established three information points within Town Hall Four, uh, four information points within town that are wooden boards that provide flyers and the information, uh, basically that we've got on a digital, um, digital basis. So those are located at the courthouse, at town hall, at the post office, and at the visitor's center. Uh, those will be updated as we update information.
Okay, um, it's just, I'm concerned because I believe sometimes things are put on, say, Silverton Community Bulletin Board or say prior to it being on the county and town website. Um, but you're saying it's first it should be, these orders should be on the county and town website, correct?
Uh, correct, that's, we, we get them onto the, uh, county website always first. We then distribute it to the town and then, then it goes accordingly to social media. Um, I do have to say, uh, you know, we are, Becky has now, um, joined me here, uh, but we are, um, uh, you know, this, this is, the, the county acts as the umbrella in this so that the town and the county function together in this disaster, but, um, on the- But on the kind of official side of things, definitely the county kind of is the the driver of the bus, so to speak.
And if there's an alert, it would come out possibly NICSOL, which is a text, correct? And then would it then go email also?
Correct. The NICSOL Public Alert System is an opt-in system that we currently use. And it is a text distribution and and then an email as well. And we NICSOL is a separate email system, but we also use, we just purchased actually a constant contact database. So we're using that. So if you sign up for that, you'll also get more kind of more information. But the actionable information, like any any alert type information that'll be over the NICSOL system.
Okay, and if anything, I would just really caution the Silverton Community Bulletin Board or, say, issues. Those are Facebook, you know, they're on Facebook and that they would you say that it would be best to just post that people go to the official county website? Not that anything should be really posted on those on on Facebook?
I don't see a problem with that. I mean, what what is your feeling on that, Tiffany? Because usually, the sheriff pointed out, you know, the the latest on Facebook and it was official.
Yep, Facebook and any social media platform is that is really industry standard with emergency communications. And we do honestly, it is just, it's no different from the telephone in the old days. It's it's just a way to communicate and we just make sure that that information is on there. The official declarations are posted on the county. They're also delivered to the state. So we always make sure those official channels are done first.
Is it, can you guys still hear me on this?
Yes.
Just on those, just in the industry that I work in, I'd really encourage like everyone to actually read the regulation, go to Department of Public Health and Safety, go to the MED, go to any of those, not just, you know, a news report from Polis, Polis's speech or anything like that. But to actually go to the website and read the regulation or the order that's been put into place. Because from from how people interpret it to how it's it might be written does differ sometimes minimally, but sometimes substantially from from how people might interpret that. So just from my experience and wanting to be part of the town and obviously make it better in any way that I can, that's
Excuse me, sir, this is about this is about the COVID-19. This doesn't have anything to do with marijuana.
Oh, not not with that.
If I may interject here, we we need to limit and not have any comment from the public at this part of the meeting. I'm sorry, but those are just our rules of engagement.
Jim, I have a question. Do we have respirators up here for EMS services?
Yes, yes, trustee Renan, and that is we have N95 masks, surgical masks, all the appropriate protective equipment. And we have through some grants, we do have basically a a stockpile that we we are really holding on to due to the nature of how much, how how hard that is to access. But right now, our first responders do have adequate PPE. But I have to emphasize that once something occurs, you can go through that equipment really, really quickly. So that's why we're being very, very conservative with all of that equipment. And all the first responders, this is law enforcement, search and rescue, EMS, fire. Everyone is getting fit tested and public health as well and emergency management. Everybody is getting properly geared up for basically the personal protective equipment to to keep first responders safe.
And who's doing, you say they're all going to be fit tested and that includes the fire department and search and rescue?
That is correct.
Okay, and who's doing the fit testing?
There's we have regional, we work with regional partners, so it's a person coming up from Durango.
Okay, good. I know they're pretty stringent on things like that. We used to have to do it for mining.
Exactly, yes.
But just, you know, just to, I just want to make sure that all of EMS has access to the to the respirators when they're needed. I'm going to get online. I got online. I'm going to make some. They're not going to be probably as good, but they're they'd be good in a in a pinch, I think. And they're really easy to make. And I've got the fabric.
That would honestly, all means are are game right now, so we appreciate it. Becky Joyce is here as well. Were there any specific questions on the public health order?
Has anything
Or the next steps? Yes, Jess?
Anything changed as far as availability of testing or testing kits?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Sure.
Becky will field that.
Hey, hey, Jess. As far as we stand over the weekend, just consulting the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, we, the process of ordering tests goes through the emergency preparedness and response, the SNS, the National Stockpile, and things are just very delayed. We are not high on their priority because we don't have a known outbreak right now, as well as we are a small population. And there's continuing evidence and advice that testing doesn't, at this point in our county, would not change our actions of advising people to stay home if sick. There's about a 10% positivity rate with testing at the state level, at least that was the case on Friday. I don't know now. So 10% of everyone whose testing comes out to be positive. They do expect a spike in cases very soon, I guess epidemiologically. So, you know, as far as testing here, we're still kind of in, you know, just waiting, but it's also not a recommended practice at this point. We know we have outbreaks in the country. We know they're coming this way. And so we're just supposed to follow protocol at this time.
Is that so that we don't use up the test kits before we actually need them? Is that the idea, the rationale, or?
That might be it, Jess. They have really stringent criteria at this time. If during, who did the drive-through testing on Friday and Saturday? And the criteria was very strict, over 70 years old with, you know, either cough, shortness of breath, fever. If you were a healthcare worker, if you, you know, all these things, it's just very stringent. If you go to Mercy Regional, they won't even test you unless you are hospitalized and meet the the testing criteria because there is such a shortage on tests. I've been getting a lot of emails and communication about point of care testing to come, or you can do it in the office, but they're a couple of weeks out. So I think over the next few weeks, we might see some advancement in testing practices. But I did double check again this weekend with, you know, the powers that be. Are we, should we be doing something different? Should we try to order our own private tests from a private industry? And and so far, the the directors are saying, no, just follow the guidelines. If you are sick, stay home, you know, self-isolate, quarantine, etc. The testing is more useful for epidemiologists to track cases versus actually changing behavior in a in a big way, you know. Whether you have a test or not, it's still, you need to follow this protocol and this criteria. It's not to say I wouldn't want tests here. I would love tests. Sometimes there's some symptoms going around that I'd be very curious about. But they're just not that available for the general public anyways. Does that help?
I think you guys have been amazingly informative. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
We're trying.
And so Becky and Jim, moving forward, you, we will hear probably possibly more from you on the county's website. Will we be just that there would be notifications posted there is where we should we we should take our attention to those to that site?
Yeah, I, you know, Facebook is actually probably the fastest delivery. So we did do a press conference this afternoon and we are going to just try to do kind of more individual basically dialogue from each person on the team. So maybe myself or Becky or Bruce or Kim it may just deliver a message just to give him more of a consistent update so people from the community have someone that they can connect this information with.
Well, I guess my concern is that the the Facebook, the Silverton Community Bulletin Board is not a government site. It's monitored by people in the community that are not government officials and
But they're a lot smarter. Sorry.
Trustee Decay, that's a great point, but I just would like everyone to remember when we had the 416 fire, they were very forward, forward-moving with getting information onto Facebook. And that's our goal. We don't limit to one platform. Our goal is just to get the information out and we don't, you know, we're not going to corral people to one one location. Our goal is just to make sure that we people as possible.
There's also, I don't know if you guys heard Dan say about signing up for the PIO email so that you will get updates. It's, you know, in other public health departments, they have a communication team of at least three people and I don't have one. So on Facebook, when I get, and I'm not advocating for Facebook in particular, but when I get messages from CPH, I can share them directly and it takes me one click versus, you know, we're in a process of uploading certain things on the county website. We're also figuring it out as we go, so hopefully you'll see some improvements this week with feedback. But if you do have the email, the PIO@SanLanColorado.com, Jim can type it in there and then you'll be, it's like a, you know, you'll get a feed over email versus having to go on Facebook. And then we also did, I mentioned, so Carrie Metzler is our senior liaison. And she has reached over 45 people with personal calls that don't use social media. And a knock on the door if they don't answer the phone with social distancing, of course, to hand them resources. And then we also have the, they're called the JIC for Joint Information Commission, but the boards around also because we understand that everybody uses Facebook or social media.
Yeah, and just I typed that information in, but we also, the visitor's center staff is also fielding calls and we have given them talking, basically talking sheets with the information. And they have strict guidelines to use that information. And then if they have further questions, one of our staff will follow up with the person.
Well, thanks. Jim, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, you know, we will try to update the both the the town board and the county commissioners as information changes. And thank you all for letting us come here and talk tonight.
I have one comment actually to you guys. Just as far as your public elected officials here go, we'd really appreciate if you guys could keep us in the loop a little bit more as you guys are making these decisions. A lot of times, these are coming to me secondhand from citizens of the community, asking me for direction and input some of the information that you guys are are have yet to put out. And frankly, it's kind of embarrassing to not to not that that these people have more information than we do as the elected officials. And there's there's been a lot of criticism of of the processes of this as well, that the public officials are just completely left out of this.
Austin, I hear you on that. And yeah, very respectfully, we are county employees and this is really the, when a disaster, especially if this scale happens, we really ensure that our, the the board of commissioners is up to date and the sheriff. And, you know, we will, you know, there's just more trustees to get a hold of. So we will work on on getting that communication link. But just know that these this event has moved so quickly that we have had to make make decisions within legal legal guidelines and framework that we have to move on quickly for public safety.
And I'll just say duly noted, and we will improve that. I, as the county nurse, report to my board of health, which is the commissioners. And I do make sure I call them before I sign an order to let them know what's going on. And so if there's a process for us not to need to talk to each of you individually, but to talk to one person that can relay that information. It's not that we don't want to talk to you guys, but we're, I think we're going on our, I don't know, 13th hour of work today and the phones are just going off the hook at all times. So if you have suggestions for, I think we could improve on that, especially over the weekend. I think some things came out pretty quickly. I signed my public health order after in this afternoon after making sure I was contacting my board of health. So we will do better with town council members. I hear you loud and clear.
I'll do my part as well, Mayor Protem Lashley. And just so everybody does know, there is a repository of information on COVID on the town of Silverton's website. We're mirroring pretty much all the information that the county is is receiving from both Jim and Becky. So at any given moment, if they've given it to us, we put it out on the website, just so you know.
Thanks.
Just want to give us any information. I was hearing about some of this information that was going to come out in this public health order that came out today on Friday evening. I had to call Deanne, our public information officer, on Saturday morning to figure out what was going on because people were, people were worried and really scared about what was going on. And it would be really helpful from you guys to, even even if it's unofficial information, just remember when you when you have a meeting and you guys talk about things, that that gets out to the public and misinformation starts with no information.
Don't we have one person in the town that is the recipient of this information?
Well, again, that would be the the county website. And that's, I guess that's why I'm really reiterating that we make sure that all the correct information is on a government site, a government-approved site, rather than, say, trickling or speculating on on others, Facebook.
Isn't Lisa Branner or somebody in in charge and already in that position where there's there's one person to communicate with?
Deanna Gairos is our Public Information Officer who has done a really great job in trying to get some of this information out. It just, it just doesn't come into us.
Yeah, and just, Austin, and just so all the trustees know, we have been, the tempo of this has picked up. So last, last weekend, kind of moving forward, we have had meetings on Mondays and Fridays. And John Ryder and Lisa Branner from the town have joined in on those coordination calls. It's just, you know, and I, you know, this past weekend, things moved very rapidly and, you know, we do apologize for not getting that information out to all the trustees, but there's just certain limitations of what-
Email. Email.
Group email, group. You can put everybody in a group and email us.
You know, so yeah, get on, in that, we got the constant contact just set up last week, but if you, Deanna's list, she will make sure to get you the latest, greatest information.
Thanks. I know you guys are really working hard. We don't mean to pick on you.
You guys are doing a great job. Like I'm really not trying to pick on you. I'm just trying to, you know, maybe get information so that we can help the spread of misinformation going on and be able to handle it.
We appreciate it and it is, it's, this will take a, you know, it's a, it's a community effort because there is a lot of misinformation and we, we can't, we can't put out every spot fire of misinformation. So I mean, I definitely appreciate, Austin, you bringing this up because honestly, it is a little more challenging to communicate with the town trustee. Just there's more of you than the Commissioners. And we'll work on, on getting that a little more streamlined.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Just, just one more comment too. Sorry, guys. But if that information could be kind of relayed as, you know, as appropriate to the Chamber of Commerce folks as well, that would allow our, kind of our business community to be able to kind of make decisions based on their businesses as well. I've been getting calls from some of our summer business owners in the last couple days as well. So if they, if they were able to kind of stay in the loop to the Chamber of Commerce or some other routes to that, that might also help them and help us as business owners kind of.
Yes. Yeah. And, yeah, yeah. You know, and that's kind of the great thing where Deanna is the Chamber Director and RPIO. So that's why she's kind of the perfect person for that. But we are starting to communicate more with the summer businesses just with the length of the impact of this event, they're going to be concerned as well.
Yeah. And, and you know, I totally understand how fast this is moving right now and that the same information that you'd be giving them right now is the same information that I have of, we have no idea where this is going and how long this is going to take. So thank you, guys.
Yep. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much and we will, we'll stay in touch.
Thanks, Jim and Becky.
Yes, thank you both.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, for your hard work.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to financial statements. They are included in your packet. We're obviously through February. There's not a great deal to report. If this were different circumstances, I would have been telling you, we're off to a great start this year and really looking forward to later in the spring and summer. But with what has happened to us here, these are going to change very rapidly and probably not for the best. So I'm not sure unless you have specific questions, you could see in the sales tax, you know, we were off to a great start and it just, this is a real bummer, but it is what it is. I can only tell you, you know, staff is looking at every line item. We're considering every expenditure carefully. We'll see later on in the staff reports, you know, we're starting to toss around some ideas and I'm starting to work as best I can to really look at a projection over the next six months and see what this is going to look like. Because we're anticipating a, you know, a very significant negative hit to sales tax collections. It's possible we're going to get into delinquency with utility bills, et cetera. And is there things we want to do as town to help our residents and businesses over the next few months the best we can financially to soften this blow? But overall, it's, it's, I don't want to sugarcoat it. It's going to be a grim picture here and we're going to need to be very careful until we get through this thing. So I guess if, I know there's other business on the, on the table tonight and unless there were specific questions, I would, I would say as of right now, we're, we're okay. We're okay, but your staff is, is looking under every rock and going to try to trim every expense over time is off the table now unless an absolute emergency. You know, we're looking at literally every expense saying, is this discretionary in any way? Can we eliminate it from this year's budget? Can we push it down the road? You know, those type of things. So we'll do the best we can and keep you informed.
John, I appreciate that. Reading your report, you know, I see where you're really concerned about monies coming in or not coming in. And also John cites what he said about maybe cutting staff, you know, in order to help the budget in some way. You know, I, that was one of my main concerns and I had already talked to one of the other trustees who had talked to you already about really taking a look at the budget and cutting unnecessary things. Well, everything's necessary, but you know, prioritizing. And I see that you guys are doing that and I appreciate that.
Yeah, more work to do on that, of course. So we just started digging in, but you know, anything that could be considered any remotely a luxury is, is not going to happen. So just essential town services the best we can and we'll have some better projection and look at this thing going forward as we, as we kind of develop strategy here. But, you know, we're, like I said, expecting a big hit here in summer sales tax collections. And the difficult, one of the more difficult things about dealing with this whole crisis is we just don't know where.
Or how long? I mean, you know, they're saying until August, some of the talking heads are, it's, you know, that could kill us.
So do, do you have any specific ideas about what we could do for the community?
We'll get to that later in the, in the staff reports. I don't know if we want to, I do have some ideas that have been brought to my attention and other things that we thought that we can talk about in the staff report if that's okay.
Okay.
But with that, I'll kind of conclude the review of the financial statements. Like I said, they were, they looked really great through February and they're not going to look so great going forward. So if there's no more questions, we can move on to the consent agenda. I would open up that for any questions. I think you did get, we inadvertently left out the accounts payable, check register. There, as you can see, not, not a whole lot there as, as the effects of us cutting back are already taking effect. But I would open up for questions on any of the three items.
Okay, I have a, a question. Is this where, if I wanted to make a couple simple changes to the minutes on the 24th and the 9th, is this where I would do that? Did you say yep?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate at this time.
Okay. So I would like it in the minutes to be reflected on the 24th, that I had concerns about awareness of the separation agreement of the trustees. And then on the 9th, that my concern was the awareness of the community about the separation agreement. And I, I did listen to the 24th again and there was nothing in there about campaigning. So we, we could just make a simple change and not make a big deal about it, that, that that was about awareness. And I could, if I wanted to, should I make a motion to that effect?
No, not unless you're going to approve the entire consent agenda with a caveat to change something on the minutes.
Well, the entire, this is on the consent agenda and it would just be changing those two, just some verbiage for those two dates and the verbiage could be simple. Just about awareness of the separation agreement and for the trustees for the 24th and then awareness of the community about the separation agreement on March 9th. So, okay, then I, I'll just make a motion that I would like the minutes to reflect the, my concern with regard to awareness of the separation agreement of the trustees on the 24th and then again on the, the 9th about the awareness of the community with regard to the separation agreement. And trustee Graham, when you did that, when you listened to the minutes, are you saying that that was in it, but not the way that you wanted to sound? Or was it not in the minutes and you want to add it? We could just delete all the stuff that is in the minutes about me, just to make it, I'm trying to make it simple. So no, people don't, Kelly doesn't have to do that much work. And if you could just delete all that's in there and just say that trustee Graham had a trustee report expressing a concern about those two subjects. One was regard to the trustees and the other was with regard to the community. I'm just offering that because I think it's maybe simpler for everybody.
But you're changing the minutes.
I, I, I'm not generally in favor of changing the minutes, but there's a couple things in here that I don't think are reflected properly after listening to that tape. The first sentence that reads trustee Graham reported that she believes. I don't agree that that's necessarily the way that that should read. I think maybe trustee Graham questioned election law related to the sponsoring of a political ad. I don't think that, that she believes is, is a correct reflection of the way that that was. And then the last sentence of that paragraph, trustee Graham indicated that she has information for the board to look at and then she'll leave it for them. Mayor Tukki asked that trustee Graham give that information to Mr. Ryder. That's very vague and does not reflect what, what happened there.
That's exactly what happened.
That is, that is. Yeah, she did say that.
That, that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. Why even put it in there if it, if it doesn't refer to what information she had for the board?
She had a group of papers she wanted handed out and so Chris, yeah, Chris wanted her to give them to John Ryder to distribute to us.
Which is the protocol.
Doesn't reflect what information that is and it doesn't read well in the minutes for anyone.
But we never saw the information.
Well, what hap, we did have a conversation about what happened to that information. I mean, I don't know that we need to go into that again, but where they were, where it was actually found.
I, I mean, I think it would be better to reflect on there. Trustee Graham indicated that she had information for the board and Mayor Tukki asked that trustee Graham give that information to Mr. Ryder as his proper protocol.
And I did leave it right there on the table. I don't, I'm not sure how to resolve this properly because, well, my main concern in that situation was trustee awareness of a legal document that was agreed upon. And that was, that was one of three documents that I left on the table to be distributed to the trustees and whomever. And then that was on the 24th. And on the 9th, my main concern then was the community, that the community had a right and a need to know and that they don't, they didn't know. And those, that was the gist of everything I said on those, on those days. And if you just reflected that in the minutes, that would make it a lot simpler and we could move on to the next agenda item.
I'm not, I'm not sure that action minutes are meant to reflect intention necessarily, but there's plenty of intention that's reflected in the way that this reads here without necessarily reflecting it correctly.
Yes, and that's my, thank you, and that's my issue with it.
So i- if we wanted to take the intention out of it and say, you know, in, in the start, but like getting into people's convictions and she believes this and that, that's, it's, we're, and I understand this is something small that, you know, probably nobody will ever read again, but it still is kind of, it's part of the public record. And I do think it's, it's important to consider having it, you know, one way or the other. You know, are we going to reflect intention on here or are we not? Are we just reflecting kind of what was said as action minutes?
Well, then I agree that we should remove the word believes, but I think everything else should stay as it was because it does reflect exactly what happened during the meeting. Remove the word believe and you've taken out conjecture.
Okay, so we're going to go with this. I like the suggestion that trustee Borella had made about removing the word believe. So I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the one change under the minutes from February 24th. That would say, under number seven, trustee report, the first sentence, trustee Graham reported that there may be an election law violation, removing the word she believes.
I'll second it.
What do you suggest replacing believes with? Because that's the verb for the sentence.
For that particular place in the minutes.
No, reported is the verb, Austin. Trustee Graham reported that there may be an election law violation.
In that, in that, I don't have trouble with that.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. We need a vote.
Yes.
And that, so are we just, are we just discussing the 24th or are we discussing the 9th also? I'm abstaining. Can I do that?
The motion was made discussing only the minutes of February 24th.
Okay. So you're leaving out all the other, all the, the other March 9th minutes and?
No, those are included with the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm not having a chance to really review this right at the moment, but maybe it's the part about the beliefs that is the most troubling.
And that's been removed.
Okay.
Judy, would you like this table? Just, I think it's-
With all due respect, trustees should not be writing the minutes. I like the way that these are written right now. We've, we've made the changes. If we could have a vote.
I agree, Jess.
So do I. Yeah, we need a vote on it.
Roll call, please, Kelly.
Trustee Barella?
Yes.
Trustee Graham?
No.
Trustee Wager?
Yes.
Trustee DeCay?
No.
Trustee Renaudin?
Yes.
Mayor Prochey Lashley?
No.
And Mayor Tuchy?
You know, guys, one other time, I got thrown with a three to three, and I tell you, this is nothing like that, Chris.
It is related to that. Well, that's the truth.
Go ahead and vote, Chris. Please vote, vote with your conscience and, and vote how you feel. This really is not comparable.
Yeah, it isn't.
Yes, and let's just put this away. Enough is enough.
Well, then we have the minutes from the 9th.
No.
No, we did this all together.
We've just approved the consent agenda, Judy. The only change is versedated.
I am so done. Okay, I don't, I don't exactly know what my options are. Probably I don't have any. But-
This consent agenda can be tabled and moved to the next meeting.
The consent agenda has been, the consent agenda has been okayed. It has been called. Kelly voted, and we now have a three to, so we're done. So it's not, nothing's being moved. It's all taken care of.
Okay.
Do I make myself clear? Good. And I'm gonna-
Okay, thank you. I know that was difficult. We can move on to staff reports if it pleases the board. And honestly, the one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is most important on page 40 for the board to consider at the bottom of Kelly and I's staff report is, is just a paragraph of things we've started to think about, you know, in ways that we might be able to help residents and commercial businesses here navigate this difficult time financially. So I don't think it's anything we need to, we can decide on right now. I, I really need to get into a projection here over the next several months to find out what, if any, our capabilities would be to, you know, to push off due dates for utility bills, or waive late fees and interest, and waive shut-off fees. You know, there's any number of things that we could consider that might help out here in the next few months. So I guess the homework I have of this board, some of you will be here in the next couple of weeks after the election, some not, but just if you're stepping down or moving on as a trustee, it still doesn't mean you might have a good idea. And if you do, please bring it to me, because we'd like to consider, you know, any number of things that town may be able to do to help here. Other than that, I would just entertain any other questions on the staff reports that you may have.
I would just note that since we have read the report, given about the renovations necessary to the wastewater treatment plant, and how that alone is going to potentially increase consumer bills, we need to be very careful about what kind of services we decide to waive, because we are potentially already in the hole when we're talking about trying to pay for the renovation on this wastewater treatment plant.
Yes. Thank you.
Hi, Jess. I do have one. It's on Lisa Adair's page, page 42. Obviously, I missed the last meeting. So there are three proposed new vacation rentals. We worked over two in the past two weeks, two across from each other on Reese and one on Empire. Can you give me just a little bit of insight into that? What happened in the previous meeting that I missed? Is Lisa there?
Is she there? I'm going to have to let you answer that one. I think she's still on.
I'm here, and those vacation rentals do not go to the town board. Those are processed by town staff. And if there's questions about them, or anything unusual about them, they go to the planning commission.
Just because it's written that two are directly across from each other. So that's what my big concern was, because I was not at the last meeting. Was that addressed at the previous meeting?
No, they weren't discussed at the town board meeting. I don't know if I, question, do you have a?
No, I guess it's just the way you worded it. Were worked over in the past two weeks, so that's why I assumed it was at the previous board meeting, because of the way it was worded. So I get what you're saying now. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to trustee reports. Open it up to anybody that has a trustee report.
Barbara, do you want to address the library board?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. We, what did we do? I mean, I, what we decided, we, we talked about a possibility of closing the library, and I think everybody got the information on that. Jackie said that she's there cleaning anyway, and that she would work out some kind of a system if somebody wanted to check out a book, or a movie, or they can come to my house and pick out a movie if they want. But anyway, at the library, that she would figure out a safe way of handling the merchandise. In other words, would she, would she set it in the entryway and then go back in the library, and the person comes in and picks it up? Or there's just logistics that she needed to work out to make it work successfully. Anything else on that, Molly?
No, that it was going to be two weeks for 100% closure, and then the board reevaluated again in two weeks to see where we are at with the virus spread. So that was all that passed at that meeting.
Yeah, there was, there's hardly anything we talked about. I mean, the big, the main thing was, we decided that it would, in good conscience and for the safety of the employees, that they should shut it down.
Yeah. Okay, that's all we've got.
Well, the interesting thing that she brought up was that most of the visitors the last, during that week, were tourists, because there was no place in town where they could go in and sit down and have lunch, or anything to do in town, so they went to the library. And that's what concerned her more than anything, was the fact that a lot of out-of-towners were coming into the library. And I think that's been fixed this weekend. Which, I have a question about that, if anybody can answer me. I saw a car in town today from Arizona, and it was pulled over with one lady in it, and she was looking at a map. Is there something posted at the end of town advising people not to come into Silverton?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought Bruce was going to do something regarding that, to, to restrict people from out of town from coming into town. Anyway, I can check with him on it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else with a trustee report?
We had a planning commission meeting. Both topics that we had were relevant to the county, not necessarily to the town. But there was an update on the hidden treasure B and B, and they had asked us for a final approval, which we gave them, and talked through a couple more other issues, like parking and things, and then talking about the, the county commissioners meeting regarding a tiny home style RV park that they had in Lime Creek, neither which really relate to the town at all. But if anybody has any extra questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay.
I have a trustee report. I want to say that I think that the town trustees have a duty to enable the community to have awareness about that separation agreement between the town and Gilbert Archuleta. And that's the, that is my, the end of my report.
Judy, I don't, I'm not sure you're going to find the support of this board for that. You don't have my support for that.
No, you don't mind either, Judy.
And I'm not, I'm not making a motion. I'm just making a report.
Well, you know, I, after listening to you for the last three weeks, I'm sorry to say this, but it seems like too much of an obsession with you. You know, I think everybody understands what happened five years ago, and if they didn't know, they certainly know now. I think we just ought to let it drop and let the election do its thing.
Okay, I agree. We should, of course, let the election do its thing. I'm just making-
I do believe we received a letter from Mr. Koznick that pretty much covered everything that we need to know as a board of trustees.
And that is a, that is Mr. Koznick on, in this meeting?
It's a confidential letter, and all of the trustees received it. So I-
In, it was a confidential letter? That can't be discussed then?
Judy, Judy, I don't think that this is appropriate at all in this meeting anymore. I think we should call a point of order and, and we-
Yeah, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no continued business, so return to public comment. Lisa Branner, if you're still out there and can guide us through if there is any public comment. It looks like we still have 13 attendees on board with us at this hour.
Yes, indeed. So if we do have anyone viewing that would like to comment, once again, you can use the hand icon on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand and indicate that you would like to speak. Tonight, we can also accept your public comment typed in, in the chat bar. So we'll hold on for a second and see if anyone raises hands or gives us a message.
Well, I'll say something. It was just brought to my attention that it is Mayor Protem Lashley's birthday today, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Are you old yet?
I'm 35 years old.
35?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Just a baby.
Yeah, definitely. I, I also wanted to say something. This may be Mayor Tuchy's last meeting with us, and I just wanted to tell her thank you so much for your service to this community and this town. And you've been a fantastic mayor to serve with, and I've been very proud to be your Mayor Protem and to serve on the board with you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Austin. And I, I thank all of you guys. You've been an excellent board. We've worked well together, and I expect you to go forth and prosper. I know some of you are going to be coming off the board, and I know that some of you are going to be coming back on the board, and some of you are going to be the, the two main foundation people as you watch the other ones coming in. I also apologize tonight. I hope that whoever is mayor never, ever, ever has to do a three to three, where they become the fourth. It's, it's one of the, the hard parts of being mayor, and I haven't had a lot of them, but there's a scab that gets pulled. I'm sorry. And it, and hurts. But I, I wanted you guys to know that, that whoever comes on, you've got an excellent staff, a better staff than, than I've seen in the 14, 15 years that I've been on the, the board and as mayor. And you've got a good foundation. You've got an excellent administrator who knows the stuff, and is going to stand there for everybody in the town. And I hope that, that we're always going to go forth and prosper. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Mary, Mayor Tuchy. Glad to have served with you.
Me too.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's been a pleasure working with you on the board and our podcast. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jess. And we're expecting you to get back in.
And Mayor Tuchy, I appreciate your work very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and so at 8:41, if we have no more, we take a deep breath and go home and have some ice cream.
I don't have any.
Oh, or something. And go forth and prosper.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, John, a lot for what you did.
Thank you, Lisa.
Have a, have a great evening.
We'll dial this in for next time. Hopefully, it'll be a little smoother. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and for bearing with us through this.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Bye.